Ready?
He's always ready.
Like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, January 29th, 2025. We're going to start with a moment of silence and then the pledge.
Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have public participation on agenda items only. This is three minutes for comment maximum and we are being live streamed just for everyone to know. So if you have any public participant, if anyone in the public would like to participate, make any comments on any agenda items now is the time. Seeing none, approval of the minutes. We have the January eighth workshop minute, minutes, the January fifteenth legislative meeting minutes and the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five salary board meeting minutes for the January eighth and fifteenth, I'll accept the motion. For any of them, I'll accept the motion. So, so move proof, just workshop legislative first, yeah? So move for workshop legislative, do I have a second?
Second point of discussion, I know I had comments that I had recorded that I want to make sure that were a part of the agenda. So I did hand those to Jess, just so that's appropriate and accurately recorded.
Okay, yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, January fifteenth, twenty twenty five salary board meeting minutes approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman, do we have a second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Peace.
Good morning, Commissioners. On January twenty ninth, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the sale and lease of real property, matters of personnel, and the county's ERP system.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Is there any questions of Mr. Peace? Hearing none, move on to directors and guests, salary board, Ms. Weed.
Good morning.
Um, I'd like to request a vote on salary board items A through E.
Is there a motion on salary board items A through E? So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion?
Uh, just a question for clarification, are these items within the budgeted numbers for twenty twenty five?
None of the departments are over budget. Um, so I think we're.
Okay, Vince, can we get an explanation on A? For under community, community and economic bill?
To the best of my understanding of that position, it would be to um, help coordinate all the different grant programs that flow through D C D, which um, I'm trying to remember the last number that Director Connor gave me, but um, well over ten that they handle and with some of the recent contracts that they've ended and given up through different grant programs, I think they have identified the need to have a full-time staffer handle that because it ties down um, the other staff.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, any other discussion? Yes. Would you like to come up to the microphone? I just want to make sure those online are able to hear. Thank you, Mary.
I just wanted to note an error that is on um, the letter C, number one, the salary should only be sixteen dollars.
Okay.
And it is listed as twenty dollars forty cents per hour, so.
Thank you for catching that. Uh, can I have, uh, would anyone like to amend their motion to accept that amendment at sixteen dollars? I think, did you make the motion?
I, I made motion, I, I would be glad to make a friendly amendment, but where is the associate? Is there right now um, a hiring for this position or this is just simply the post?
Uh, this is actually the forensic psychology uh, intern that we've, we've discussed and currently I don't have any law clerks to fill the internship position. And so to keep her on as she's a valuable member of the office, I.
So the only thing I want to make sure is there's a correlating association with her salary with whatever the move is in the actual personnel packet.
Right, that would be item number thirteen, which um, the salary board item was updated when I sent the revised packet yesterday to reflect the sixteen.
Yep.
Um, it's just the personnel packet did not reflect that update, which I had pointed, I was going to point out today.
So uh, I'll, I'll make a separate amendment to the actual personnel packet once it's presented, but I will make the amendment uh, to the salary board motion to include under C, item number one, uh, the salary amount being sixteen dollars an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other further conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion carries, uh, personnel packet.
Uh, for the personnel packet, as we noted, item number thirteen um, to align with the salary board request would be sixteen dollars. And then item number fifteen is being moved um, to the next personnel packet for the, the coming week um, due to clearances not coming back. So item fifteen is being removed.
All right, do I have a motion uh, on the personnel packet, given the amendment to item number thirteen and the uh, removal of item number fifteen?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to that effect, but I also want to pull out and vote separately on items eleven, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So I will make the amendment, which would include the correction for the salary under uh, the public defender at sixteen dollars, uh, fifteen, which would be the removal of the social services for children and youth. Uh, and then um, the, with those amendments being made, uh, the actual items eleven and then sixteen through nineteen in a separate vote.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have eleven, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Would you like to handle these individually or as a slate?
I'd like to handle the first one individually and the second four as a, as a group.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number eleven.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, just for point of discussion, I made comments last week that were detailed related to process concerns uh, that um, were very clear in the agenda and also I've yet to hear uh, how the two hundred twelve thousand four hundred twenty nine dollars uh, that is going to be added to this budget is going to be amended and justified. Um, there is a huge impact related to the hiring of this position and I wanted to be clear without having those answers, I will be a no.
Understood. Uh, just as a point of discussion, when adjusted for inflation, we've paid even more than this for this particular role in the past. Having only one person in our chief clerk role with no deputy has been a detriment to Dolphin County in my opinion, and I think this is a crucial role and a needed um, we, we need this role, so uh, given that, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose?
No.
Items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion.
I, I obviously I'm just going to be a recorded no vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Personnel packet, it's been moved. Ms. Weed, thank you for your time. Any other questions of Ms. Weed before she goes? Thank you so much. Next up, uh, Mr. Davis, Budget Finance Director.
Commissioners, morning. I have no changes to the investment report sent out this morning. Uh, it's also. And I apologize, I didn't write down the number. There was one P O removed at the department request because they need to make some changes. Um, but otherwise the pack in front of you is ready for your vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase order packet?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Peace.
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there are questions in me.
Any questions for Mr. Peace? Hearing none, Solicitors' report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, matters requiring board action, um, all those items have been reviewed uh, and approved for vote uh, by the board, although I understand we, we're likely be tabling some items.
Certainly. Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move on to matters requiring board action. Uh, are there any that we need to pull out and vote on separately?
But before we. Before we get there, I'm going to uh, ask my colleagues in the Chief of Staff's office and in the future, uh, if there are items here that we may have questions on, that we ask the directors as we've done in past years to come and, and answer questions. I'm, I'm aware we're going to be pulling some today, but the directors, uh, were sitting here in the audience, they would be able to answer the questions and not have us asking each other what it means.
I'm in favor of um, department chairs, if they're not, or department heads or directors, if they're not able to be here, sending a representative who can support the item that is on the agenda in the event that any of the commissioners have questions about that. Certainly uh, we know, you know, uh, that might get taxing, but if you're not able to be here as a director, you could certainly send someone to represent the uh, the particular item that's on the agenda who has the information. So I, I'm in favor of that. And if that communication, uh, uh, Mr. Peace, if you could send that communication out to directors, just letting them know that that's our expectation moving forward so that we have uh, opportunity for clear lines of communication uh, in our meetings. Uh, with that being said, uh, any items that need to be pulled out and voted on separately?
I would like to table for this week's meeting, item number nine.
Item number nine?
Agreement between Dolphin County Solid Waste and Recycling and Television Impressions for Media Advertising for a one-year term in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Understood.
And I'd like to request tabling items three and four.
Items three and four? Do either of you want to provide reasoning for your tabling or just uh, desire to table?
Uh, obviously I've asked questions and I got uh, the responses that you need to have a good game player.
Certainly. Commissioner Grace, anything you want to add to your table or just?
No, I agree. I agree with Fisher Hartwick. If he has questions that weren't answered prior to the meeting, let's pull it.
I agree. Uh, so we have items three, four, and nine to be tabled, am I correct? Can we make those as a slate? Yeah, would someone like to make a motion as a slate for items three, four, and nine to be tabled?
Actually, when you make move be tabled, that supersede then.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Items three, four, and nine have been tabled. Uh, with that, are there any other items? Uh, I'm going to say we need to uh, discuss item forty-three separately, so we're going to pull that to, for a separate conversation. Other than that, any other items that need to be pulled on, voted on separately?
I'd just like to have a uh, quick summary on item forty-two from the Chief of Staff.
So this is an amendment to the agreement that Dolphin County has with Sierra Cedar, who helped implement our Oracle ERP system. Uh, we need their further assistance on ten ninety-five C activities uh, so that we can get those out per our legal obligation as an employer. Does that suffice or do you want a bit more?
I'll be more blunt. We're having continued issues with Oracle implementation via Sierra Cedar, and it's been incredibly frustrating. And last time I voted on this, I was furious and I still remain furious about the uh, ultimately vital nature of these services and the uh, lackluster results that we've received from uh, those implementing uh, this. At the same time, we're in a lose-lose situation because we can't walk away. Because these are critical, um, as you've said, things that we are legally obligated to provide, that if we don't have these systems up and running the right way, uh, we won't be able to provide those. And so while I said last time, this will be the last contract for Sierra Cedar I vote on, uh, I'm eating my words today because this is vital and we have to have it. Uh, but we are also looking at solutions for how to fix this um, moving forward so that we're not going to continue to be in this round robin situation. So that's my perspective on forty-two.
Okay, so we're now at the point, you want a, a motion on the, the full body here, I mean.
Well, before, before we go there, I do have a couple of questions. I was just letting you, y'all get your questions in. Number, number twenty-two, I just want to make it clear, uh, and I'm going to ask for the, the chief clerk's input on this. This is not a financial agreement between Dolphin County and the N R A. This is an agreement to allow our um, personnel to work security at the event. It's basically just us um, recognizing the importance of security for our residents here in Dolphin County at this event and allowing our workforce to go there, but not on county time, on their own personal time.
That is correct, and we've, we've had this before, at least um, we did have uh, county's employees uh, working that event of security, but this was, we've had a meeting about this and felt it was necessary to have this uh, put in a document, so it makes it very clear, the expectations of the county um, and the event.
Previously, there's been verbal agreements to this, this is a written, acted upon agreement, okay? But again, we're not paying N R A.
No, N R A will, will be paying those employees directly for their time.
I just want to take a, a moment, follow it up and just say that, again, this is the great American outdoor show. It's the largest outdoor show, not just in Pennsylvania or the country, it's the largest outdoor show in the world, taking place here in the city of Harrisburg. Uh, and the ten-day show is eight thousand jobs, eighty million dollars in revenue to the region, and two point eight million dollars in taxes generally. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, the last uh, question I have is on item number twenty-three. This is the LERTA, we were um, we were briefed on this uh, last week. The only thing I want to add is this is just an extension through the end of the year, that, just correct me if any of my statements are wrong. This is just an extension through the end of the year. The school board's already voted on it, the city has already voted on it. Um, and the one thing I want to put on the record, that is my expectation with this, is that the county needs to have a member in the role of the board that they mentioned that would be taking place over the next year to, to continue to consider how this LERTA could be expanded to be more effective or what needs to change in order to be more effective. Uh, I'm not sure who specifically would be the best board member, but maybe it would be Mr. Dale or maybe there's somebody else. Uh, but I just want to make sure we have a, a county representative who understands our process and also can give input to ensure that that uh, LERTA, when it comes back to us for a more prop, likely long-term renewal, uh, that the county's priorities have been considered in that process.
Yes, your understanding is correct and I can make sure the city is aware of that um, request.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. All right, with that said, I'm asking for a motion on items one through, or do you have something more, sorry, go ahead.
All right, so the motion will take out three, four, nine, and forty-three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion would be items one, two, five through eight, ten through forty-two,
Mm-hmm.
and forty-four.
Yes. Would you like to make a motion to those?
Okay.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, I believe the only item left now is item number forty-three, if I'm correct?
The training packet.
Oh, and the, did we not, we just did the train, was his motion the training packet as well, item forty-four? You, yeah, you included forty-four, so I think the training packet is, was part of that. Um, do we need clarity on any training packet items? No, okay. Um, item number forty-three, um, just for historical context, this is, uh, we released an R F B for government relations and lobbying services for the first time to my knowledge, and I'm excited about how that process went. Uh, we received many written proposals and interviewed top candidates. Uh, now we are at the point of making a motion to select the candidate. By the way, this is a conditional selection. Uh, they will then need to work with our solicitors to craft a uh, a contract that will then come back to us for approval. Uh, with that said, I'm thankful to everyone who participated and took time to share how their firm could impact Dolphin County residents for the better. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Mr. Peace for his leadership through this process and collecting proposals, presenting them to the Commissioners, scheduling interviews, and ultimately guiding this process. Thank you, Mr. Peace. Um, does anyone have any comments or motions as we enter into item number forty-three?
Yeah, I was unaware until yesterday it was going to be a part of today's agenda, so I don't know sort of what we're being asked to do.
My understanding is we, we, we had these interviews for some time. We've had opportunities to, to give input to the chief clerk. He's, he's requested, I think, of each of us what our uh, determination would be, and uh, we are now in the space to make that determination in a public meeting. Uh, if there are no comments, I will make a motion. Uh, I'll make a motion that we conditionally select uh, government relations and lobbying services firm one plus strategies. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to take a moment and thank uh, Vince as well for uh, the work that he did here. I know that this full board has stated that we unanimously uh, support R F P everything. We haven't done that, we're getting close to it. Um I want to also thank uh Vince for putting on the agenda this past week, uh the RFP for Engineering, as a lot of things are moving forward quickly here. Uh but Government Relations is a very critical component of what we do here in Dolphin County. We're one of the only counties that actually have a government relations firm, not just here. We also have a federal government relations firm uh that that works for us that brings in billions of dollars. So I look forward to the challenges ahead and uh working with this new firm. Uh and I will be one commissioner who will evaluate this at the end of the year uh to see how they uh compete against others we've had in the past and projects this board deems necessary and uh top priorities.
Certainly.
Just point of discussion, um do we have the listing of responses and sort of the cost for each of those individuals and what they came? And I mean, if we're going to do things related to full disclosure, we should certainly make sure the public is aware of the actual responses made by the public relations firm or the uh government relations firms and the actual bids that they placed into Dolphin County. Because I know there was one that substantially came in at a a great rate related to uh what they currently provided versus what they were willing to provide. I'd like to see if you had that. If we're prepared to discuss and make this make this determination, I'd love to make sure we hear sort of what the responses were from one of the individuals that responded.
Uh we've had those in our inboxes for some time, I guess. The question is, do we want to release that in public information, or do we want to? How 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 would you anticipate we we share this?
Again, request. I've sat with the board that wants to release everything related to public disclosure and information. I think we should continue upon that thread and continue to release these things. I wasn't unaware until new, actually eleven fifty-five yesterday, that this was going to be an agenda item. No one had spoke to me related to it being an agenda item, and I was unaware of even what we were going to be discussing in public related to decision-making. And since we've been asked to make a decision, we should disclose sort of all the bids and the documents related to uh that determination and and process.
So I'm I'm one hundred percent in favor of us releasing all the information because I do think the community should have that information. But I want to make it clear, the reason this is on our agenda item to happen here is because a complete change in process, because now the Sunshine Act has been deemed a completely different interpretation, given the changes that have taken place on this board. And so we can't have conversations behind closed doors in meetings as has been basic practice leading up to this, and our our solicitors believe it to be appropriate for us to have particular conversations in the conversations I've had. And now we're being told we can't have them, and so we'll have it in a public meeting, and that's what we're doing right now. And so the motion is still on the floor for 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 the acceptance of One Plus. If we want to, if we want to release to the public all of the all of the uh um particular uh proposals, as far as I'm concerned, uh I have no I have no objection to releasing that to the public. Uh I I do want to say no contract has been negotiated yet because this is simply the selection and it is conditional on a contract that we would approve. So there is no rate that is set at this particular time. Uh there's certainly been proposals that included rates, but that will be up to our solicitor's office to negotiate with the vendor. Am I correct on that, Mr. Owens?
Uh, correct. This this conditional approval only, then we'll need to work on the contract from a legal end through the solicitor's office, which may may include rates.
And I I just believe should be very careful about having discussions about sunshine or out during public meetings. Um and I also believe that it's really important for us to be able to have a level of disclosure related to the same topics that the board has discussed for quite some time. I mean, I I think, you know, this is not anything personal. It's about trying to figure out how we can ensure that the folks in the public can make those determinations and see the same kind of decisions that we are so are taking a look at. And and again, I had no sort of idea what the determination was in that final agenda item today um related to today's public discussion.
Mr. Mr. Priest.
My only follow-up to that is uh we've been discussing this. Uh we actually talked about uh the timeline and not wanting to have uh either uh a duplication of effort from two firms or not having a firm representing us. So I think this falls within the timeline that we had discussed publicly uh at the end of last year. But again, I I mean, welcome to my world. I was advised of things being added to the agenda uh at the last minute, more times I can count on both hands last year.
And and I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's okay to do it when it involves one commissioner, but it's not okay when it involves another. So the idea of ensuring that that happens for all three commissioners as a third, a third, a third is simply what we're asking, and that same level of rationale is something that should be afforded this entire board.
And I agree, and that's why you were provided every single proposal that was given, and you were also provided to be into the you were in the meetings that all the interviews happened in. Now, what we're not going to do is wait while we have no representation on the Hill right now as budget talks are happening. We need to onboard this particular vendor for the sake of Dolphin County, and so that is what we're doing.
Dude, I'm not waiting. I'm actually scheduled to be on the Hill today lobbying.
Great.
Uh for advice and issues related to C cap and human services and mental health. I don't think we should ever wait, and we're our biggest advocates. But to not afford people processes that you have claimed that you want to also have is not necessarily the appropriate way to handle this.
This is a better process than anything that we've had as an agenda item up to this point. Do I have uh, given that I have a a a motion and a second, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Objection.
No.
Okay. Former business, seeing none. New business, Commissioners Discussion and Actions, Commissioner Hartwick.
He had a great week uh Friday last week uh in northern Dolphin County, uh trying to get acclimated to the new oversights uh that uh have been distributed, and there's a great deal of opportunity to look at, you know, major help for this community in northern Dolphin County. Last week, we discussed the idea of um you know, the attempt to try to bring special needs uh access to uh those services for rural residents, which is critically important and something that I believe is a really, really important focus. Uh I had some discussions with both elected officials, uh the Upper Dolphin Human Services Center. We also talked about uh the idea of a VOTEC school and the final opportunity to potentially have an urgent care for residents of northern Dolphin County. The idea of uh trying to ensure that uh the level of medical services that are provided should not be uh in a position that's just based upon financing, coming up with creative ways uh to think about a regional approach is something that I think is critically important for us to continue to keep on the front of our radar screen and sipping uh what we plan to do related to uh addressing some of those concerns. So as we get out, uh the idea of those kind of projects, you will be hearing a significantly larger amount from, and we will be ensuring that those voices are are heard here in Dolphin County. Um again, thank you to the oversight. I also want to thank the employees again for handling themselves in such a classy and dignified manner related to Dolphin County. Um sometimes when change happens, it's extraordinarily difficult. Again, I've stated this over and over. We remain proud. We remain classy. We remain committed towards solving the issues related to our public, and that will never ever change, no matter what position we're in, and and the employees have remained a committed partner in doing just that. And despite uncertainty, despite change, I just want to thank them uh for their continued support in operations within county government. Thank you.
I want to take a moment, and again, it's twice I've said his name. I'm going to say it a third time. I want to say a special thank you to Vince Pease for the great work that he did uh on behalf of the county. Uh he filled in as the Chief of Staff uh when we had an opening, and uh he actually uh was doing multiple roles, Chief of Staff, Deputy Chief of Staff, Communications Director, Right-to-Know Officer. Uh and we had an opportunity here uh to uh place Vince uh still here at the county uh moving forward as the Deputy Chief of Staff. Um and then we have a new Chief of Staff who is actually in the audience today, an individual Eric Haggerty, uh who served as the Chief of Staff for uh D the state D C E D, uh the Deputy Chief of Staff under a former governor. And he also served as the Secretary of Education for the state of Pennsylvania. So, Mr. Haggerty, uh welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you, sir, and uh appreciate you willing to take on this challenge.
Uh certainly echo uh Commissioner Hartwick and Priest's comments. I think uh it's great to see the effort in the northern end and uh certainly thankful for uh Mr. Peace's leadership, especially given the circumstances and all the weight that you carried in that role. Uh I'm excited uh for Mr. Haggerty uh beginning Monday next week uh stepping into that role. Uh with that said, uh the only uh commissioner comment I have uh to make sure is on the public's radar is that uh we have our prison town hall meeting Tuesday, February fourth uh here in this building, I believe at six P M. Uh and so it's our first time being in this facility. Uh we understand the challenges with transportation to this particular facility, given parking and such, but we do feel strongly about the uh the level of I T support that this particular room provides and also uh the 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 ability to to house people a little more comfortably than some of our other locations potentially. So we're going to continue to explore how town halls can be effective, opportunities for the community to give input in uh in prison matters, and so we want to encourage you to come out if that's something that you're passionate about, would like to speak to. Uh with that said, uh we have correspondence. Uh I'm going to direct the chief clerk to ensure that that correspondence is passed on to the necessary entities, and uh we now have a time for public participation. Again, just a reminder, uh three-minute limit, and uh we are being livestreamed. Anyone for public participation?
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Sorry.
Just a point of clarification and a question for the solicitor in regards to item forty-three that you just discussed. Um as the controller is responsible to make sure we don't overspend on contracts, will the actual contract be part of a upcoming commissioner meeting with the dollar amount in the item?
Yes. So this is just uh my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is just a selection of the entity in which we're going to begin negotiating the contract with.
Correct. It's conditional. There there will be a contract on an agenda.
Can I also ask a question?
Certainly.
I and and I apologize if I missed the net result. Will the information on those that submitted be released or not released? I I kind of I didn't I didn't hear the conclusion of that.
All instructs uh if if, well, I'm in favor of it being released. It seems as if I have a s- uh support in 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 favor of that being released to the public. Uh I guess we'll have to determine the way in which we're going to release that to the public, but we also might need to seek legal counsel on that determination because I know we have a right-to-know process and other things, but I you can't necessarily give us legal advice in a public meeting, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Correct, and and I won't give legal advice in a public meeting, but I will review this issue and provide you with my opinions.
Thank you.
Well, that's brought up, and I appreciate my colleagues' questions. I would also like uh for the public release of the of all uh of the vendors who submitted for our federal uh governmental affairs in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two.
Probably going to find that there were none that did.
Well, I don't know that that's the case, but I'm going to ask if we have similar information uh presented uh for the choice that we made for Summit Strategies. Thank you.
Wasn't here when that happened. I I believe that particular contract is also on an auto-renew. We are back to public participation. Three-minute limit, livestream, anyone for public participation.
Morning, Commissioners. Uh Pamela Carson, City of Harrisburg. Um I'm going to speak to item twenty-three. And in my quick looking at the agenda uh last night, I missed that uh LERTA was going to be on today's agenda, or I would have said something earlier. Um but since you talked about that this is a one-year going forward and some things that that uh US Commissioners would like to build into future LERTA discussions, I'd like to share with you some things that you can find in more detail on the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy and Good Jobs First about uh LERTA and tax abatement programs. Um the number one thing that is needed with with LERTA agreements is to protect schools and that schools, in particular, are able to have veto power over LERTA agreements because we balance much of what we want to do with development on the backs of children in the school district. And here, in this particular case, we are talking about the Harrisburg School District, who initially, when Steve Reed was mayor and and launched the first LERTA tax abatement program, he really bullied the school district into agreeing to this. The second thing is that LERTA programs need to have greater accountability. And I think I heard that mentioned today about the Commissioners, one of the Commissioners being part of that. Um every single and and part of that is for both the county and the city, that every single project that is coming up that wants to come in under the LERTA program must be voted on individually and that there should be a cost-benefit analysis on each project with the ability for clawbacks if that doesn't happen. That if the projects do not do what they say they're going to do, that that money can be clawed back and can be returned to the county and the city in the terms in terms of taxes. Um there's currently a lack of citizen participation in any way in the alerted discussion, and that needs to happen as well. Um and there needs to be disclosure. Uh the third thing is a disclosure of of the subsidies. Like, is the company being compliant in what they said they were going to do when they um when they applied for this? And my final thing is that um the jobs created by these new projects must be quality jobs. No seven dol- seven dollar an hour jobs. These need to be quality, full-time jobs with living wages and health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Aruta Si, Swatara Township. Um I want to start out by saying I'm very excited to see that we are creating a full-time position um for the community economic development. Um I think people should know that a contract was eliminated um for a consultant. Um that was covering a lot of contracts and was getting paid a lot more than necessary. Um and people should know that this full-time position will be uh saving money for the residents of Dolphin County and making funding that comes in um for things like housing, um weather assistance. It will make it go further because it's not being wasted on overpaid consultants. We'll have someone in-house that knows how to do this, funds hopefully keep coming in. Um and I I think it's just gonna gonna go really uh far for the county, so I'm excited about that. Um I am pleased to hear about your new oversight and how much exciting work you're getting done in your new oversight. Um I used to live in northern Dolphin County. Resources are sparse up there. The county's been making some ends to make some improvement. It sounds like you have a lot of great ideas, Commissioner Hartwick, and I'm glad to see that you're taking your passion up there and getting to work right up there. It sounds like a good spot. Um yeah, and then there's two other things I want to talk to. Um we're in a really like kind of frightening time right now. A lot of norms um are eroded. We don't know uh who's going to have jobs in the federal government tomorrow, what programs are going to be available, what monies are going to be available, and what funds are going to be available. Uh we also know that we have ice raids happening all around the state of Pennsylvania, including in our own communities, and a lot of people are scared. Um yesterday's events where money funding for social programs was all of a sudden not clear if people were going to get it was frightening for a lot of people. Um and I'm just hopeful that the county will issue some statements and reassure citizens that you we will not be participating in ice raids or um having our fam- families in our 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 community disrupted. Um and what your commitment is to to making sure and staying on top of all of these these fast-moving. It's a lot. It's why it's important that we get more help in the chief clerk's office, like you need help over there, Mr. Pease, and yeah, so I'm I'm hopeful that that we will hear something from the county soon. Um I think it would really go a long way to help people know where you guys stand and where you're going to be on these issues moving forward. So, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Mr. Haggerty. Good morning. Uh my name is Eric Haggerty. Live here in the city of Harrisburg. Uh I just wanted to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to serve uh public services where my heart is, and I look forward to uh this opportunity to return to government, and I'm grateful uh for the opportunity. uh this opportunity to return to government and I'm grateful uh for the opportunity um my my hope is that I will be able to help you all achieve success individually and collectively on behalf of the county's three hundred thousand residents um and uh again just uh honored by the opportunity and hope to earn your trust over time I also want to thank Mr. Peace whoever had the pleasure to meet with um earlier and uh want to echo the comments of uh just the incredible amount of work that has been on his plate um done a tremendous job with a variety of different responsibilities that no one person honestly should have to be responsible for um so look forward to um the opportunity to help provide some additional capacity in that regard uh and also as Commissioner Harwood stated change is often difficult and uh I recognize that and um again I hope uh to be able to earn everyone's trust over time and uh want to reassure employees here in Dolphin County that as a former uh government employee now returning um I I know firsthand uh that the public owes a debt of gratitude to our government uh public service workers um that is often not uh felt but certainly deserved so again really appreciate the opportunity to serve and look forward to starting on Monday thank you
thank you Mr. Haggerty anyone else for public comment right hearing none I'll accept the motion for adjourn
aye second
favor I adjourn